This is an impressive group of people. It is all the movers and shakers in our city who get the work done. She literally did just say that to me. And I wholeheartedly agree with her. And so we are excited to be here with you this evening. This is the second year in a row that we have done a meeting like this. As many of you know, the City Council each January meets about twice in the month, in addition to our regular meetings, to reflect upon and start setting overall priorities for the council and the city. And last year, we had the first of these meetings where we thought it was important to hear from all of you who are actually doing the work, day in and day out, to get your feedback before we finalize the priorities. So that's what we're here to do this evening. I was asked if you can speak into the mics. That's not to amplify in the room here, but we are recording this evening so other folks can also benefit from our conversation. And what we thought we would do first is go around the room, have each of the departments talk about this upcoming year, your priorities, opportunities, major projects, and challenges you see. So I think we'll start over here.
Okay, thanks very much. This is exciting for us. We will go around the room. I do hand out two little compilations of paper. One is from Public Works and one is from Housing and Community Development because there's some details that makes, it's probably easier to look at than to just listen to. And so I think, and then, Vane, I'm going to start with Darryl Braithwaite, Director of Public Works, and we'll kind of go around the loop. And I've told folks that they have up to two minutes at the beginning, so we're trying to move it along because we have a lot of folks here. But the opportunity then is for you to ask questions and things after we do our first round through so that the conversations get directed to what you want to know.
Well, thank you. I'm going to split my time with Gina. She'll talk about sustainability items that are ongoing. You have this handout in front of you which kind of goes into the details, so I won't read it, but just suffice it to say that in addition to the projects listed, there's also a second sheet which shows the remaining sidewalk work. As you might recall, we've been doing ADA sidewalk work since 2010, repairing existing sidewalks. And we've got it down to a very short list. So those are the remaining sidewalks on city streets. We have not yet started our process for prioritizing sidewalks along state highways, but you'll see those funding requests in CIP. Basically, our work includes major construction projects, some of which will be starting this spring and summer and moving through the next fiscal year. Flower Avenue, Green Street will be the big project. We're finishing up Ethan Allen. We're finishing up Lincoln. We'll also be doing the Glen Side Avenue Sidewalk Project and Stormwater Project and Traffic Calming Project at Flower Avenue and Sligo Creek Parkway in conjunction with Park and Planning. The street resurfacing lists are, streets are listed, those that will be finishing up this year and they'll plan for next year. We have a large assortment of stormwater projects. And again, you see this reflected in your CIP requests, but we have got several started already this fiscal year. We ended up diverting money from planned projects to address some unforeseen situations in stormwater projects. So some of the projects you see listed below are as a result of problem areas that we've encountered: New York Avenue and Baltimore Avenue, Second Avenue in Allegheny where we've had flooding, a problem on Poplar Avenue, Glazewood Court, which was an ice skating rink over the past weather events. So some of our planned projects were removed to put those in. And then we have the list for FY '20. We don't currently have any, we just have two small sidewalk requests so far. The pace of requests from the community has slowed down. I imagine that'll pick back up again. And we don't currently have any traffic calming requests that are in the queue that aren't being addressed. We have a number of facility maintenance projects planned. Some will be started in this fiscal year. We're doing a kind of a partial police department project related to the closing, close-in of the atrium ceiling and revamping of the administrative staff in the police department. But we've got other projects planned for the next fiscal year related to reconfiguration of the front lobby and the IT and cable rooms. I listed the vehicle purchases that will be taking place in FY '20. Those will also be reflected in your CIP. And the only other document that I included was a list of stormwater projects. We have planning documents that we use, so I just wanted to kind of provide one to you that helps to show the extent of projects that we've already identified over the next five years. And I've broken it out by planned funding source. So some are capital programs within stormwater, some are outside repair and labor, and some are related to our sidewalk programs. When we install new sidewalks, we're required to provide the stormwater facilities for those, so we fund those out of that budget. So with that, I'll turn it over to Gina to discuss through the sustainability pieces.
Thanks. Residential energy efficiency incentives will be emphasized, especially for low- to moderate-income homeowners. The city partnered with a new nonprofit, Blockchain Frontiers, head by Lieutenant James Flynn, who ran the MEA-LMI grant program for Bladensburg for many years. Blockchain is going to be administering the grant for several communities in Prince George's and Montgomery Counties. And the city is providing matching funds to ensure city homeowners qualify and can receive extras, including Energy Star appliances that are not always covered by the MEA, and the addition of solar panels when it's feasible. Multi-family and business energy efficiency and renewable energy incentives will also be increased. I'll be working with Grace and Samira in HCD to develop some new incentive programs and outreach to maximize the impact of those programs. And finally, and most importantly, the Sustainable Energy Action Plan update process is going to continue into fiscal year '20. The process will be time-consuming, and as new plans are trending towards aggressive strategies, visionary possibilities to reach zero emissions, and new policy changes that will require public input discussions before plan adoption. So I've also requested that the consultants expand the scope to include equity and resiliency into the plan this time.
All right.
For the remainder of this fiscal year, we are working on replacing the security cameras throughout the city, as well as the network switches, the routers, and the firewalls. And this will give us a good position going into next year to be able to work those systems and reconfigure them for improving security and efficiency of data going across the network. That's going to be very important as we move on to some more advanced computer projects, such as voice-over IP for the phones, things like that. We are going to also do some segmentation so that we separate the different traffic on our network. The police department traffic should not be within the same environment as, say, the recreation department. We want to make sure that we keep those separate and secure to the best that we can. We're going to continue next year with replacing computer systems for staff. We've noticed a huge increase in efficiency on the IT staff, a decrease in the amount of support that we need to provide for the new computers that have come in. So as we replace more of those next year, we expect to gain some more efficiency. And then we'll be able to move from infrastructure-type projects into development projects, system development. Those sort of areas that we need to focus on next year will be our constituent relationship management system, which is the WebQA system. You may have heard these terms before or used them, but we'll be working on, to improve and make enhancements to WebQA. We'll also be working on the 311 or Non-Emergency Request System, which is the MyTKPK system. We've had some issues with that over the past years, and we want to make that as usable and user-friendly for the residents. And the last system I would point out is being able to accept credit card payments online and be able to have online applications for the departments that need to collect payments. So we'll be able to do that, and we're looking for ways to automate the process so that data goes straight into the financial system. And that'll also increase efficiency. So the idea next year is to be able to provide efficiency for not only IT staff, but also for the departments within the city.
And just to note, in our IT unit, we have three and a half people, or three people and an intern and a half of a clerical person. Okay. Roz Crispin.
Hello. We are the triumvirate representing HCD tonight. I'm doing the planning. Of course, you know Grace Wiggins doing the housing, and Samira Cook-Gaines is our new economic development manager. I wanted to just set the context for what we're doing as a whole, and then we'll each take a minute to talk about the individual divisions. The bulk of what we do falls under two council priorities: the livable community for all and the community development for an improved and equitable quality of life. The racial equity considerations are interwoven into everything we do. Our focus is database and building on best practices both in our field and nationwide. The challenge, of course, is getting good data for a relatively small population. We're also building on the draft strategy, sorry, strategic plan for housing and economic development. And that has laid out both short-term, short, medium, and long-term goals as a good guideline for us. And it also has provided some really essential data at a very granular level that we can work with. Arts are part of everything we do. Arts has been part of the HCD department for a long time. And the council approved the cultural plan a few months ago, so we're building on the guidance for that work. Grants are also part of all we do, not only the community grants that are in Grace's wheelhouse, but the Community Development Block grants, Federal Transportation Alternative Program grants, state grants like Community Legacy, Strategic Demolition, Strategic Economic Development, and other possible sources of funding for the kinds of initiatives that we want to take on. Just a quick explanation of the chart we have given you. What we're trying to show is the intersection of housing, economic development, and planning. There's a whole collection of projects that we will all be working on aspects of. So the circles in the middle are the intersection of the divisions. They're not intended to show a hierarchy or a magnitude of the projects. They're just trying to depict a visual that would say, on issues of arts, grants, the New Hampshire Avenue corridor, the hospital, the rec center, and public engagement, we all have a piece of it to get the work done. Alternatively, there are things that only two divisions will work on together, such as accessory dwelling units, which would be housing and planning, and things like the workforce development, which would be housing and economic development. And there are also obviously individual division work that we'll get a chance to talk about for just briefly. There are also intersections interdepartmentally. As Gina just mentioned, there are things between sustainability and housing and economic development. We work closely with police, neighborhood services, PW, rec department, and so on. And cross-jurisdictionally, we do a whole lot of work with Prince George's, Montgomery County, DC, State Highway, all of those things. That's kind of setting the framework for what we do. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Grace.
So good evening. I'm Grace Wiggins. I haven't met everyone, but I'm the Community Development Manager for Housing. And what we're sharing on the second page of your handout is divided into three sections. The first is housing. Then I'll turn it over to my colleague, Samira Cook-Gaines, who will talk about economic development. And then back to Roz. So we really have an exciting portfolio of projects around the area of housing. And I've outlined some of them, and some are in larger categories. And I'll talk a little bit about each of the categories, and then stop talking. So what we're starting with is individual and organizational capacity. That includes our work with our seven registered tenant associations, building and fortifying those entities and their leadership, and helping them to help our residents live in a dignified way in this city, and helping them through many of the projects and ideas that they have in terms of remaining residents here. We're also planning on expanding our work to condominium associations. We have over 650 units of condominium housing that range from four units to over 200 units. And what we've found is that they need some additional support. And so we're coming to council, looking for some additional support around those condominium associations, especially in the areas of audits, reserve studies, so that we know that these communities are viable and that they provide housing options for families that are interested in coming into our communities. Roz already referenced ADUs. That's going to be a major project for us, and we're going to cover that probably between the three of us because there are a lot of things going on in connection with ADUs now in the county and on the county level. And it really is a wonderful opportunity to expand our housing opportunities for existing families that have space, that want to create formal housing for people who are coming in and to offset expenses, but also for people who otherwise would not have an opportunity to be a part of this community. So ADUs is going to be a big, big part of it. Modifications to our tenant opportunity to purchase law, which is something that's a wonderful opportunity, and we've seen many examples here in the city over the past several decades of people moving into homeownership where they would not otherwise have that opportunity. And so there's some modifications that we'd like to look at. And then the last is community grants. And it's a project that has gotten a brand-new life and a brand-new staffing, staff person. We just made a hire at the end of last year of a grants coordinator who comes in with a tremendous amount of experience, who's been able to just take off with putting our application system online, which is something that we haven't done before. So our entire process is now available online to our applicants. And so we're hoping through our Homestretch program, which is one of the community grant programs that we operate, which is a $50,000 appropriation from council to assist low- and moderate families in down payment assistance. Our community grants program that has a focus on creating programming that's STEAM-related. And also, the third, which is some additional support to our first-time homebuyers, which is financial literacy. In this budget, we want to see families understand not only what financial health looks like, but if they're really serious about looking for housing, we want to provide them with a mechanism to understand their own financial position because it will be very difficult to buy a home or even to think about homeownership without having a really clear picture of what you can afford and long-term sustainability. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to our newest manager, Samira Cook-Gaines. Sure.
Hi, everyone. I'm really excited to be here because this is an exciting time for Tacoma Park. I am the Economic Development Manager for Tacoma Park, Maryland. I mean, that is saying so much in just an introduction. So I'll get started kind of with what matters first in economic development, and my priority is the people. So when we talk about economic development, there is a baseline, and that baseline is the capacity of the people in our community. So starting with business retention for this coming year. So when you think about economic development, it's business retention and attraction. Right now, we really need to shore up, fortify, and understand the struggle that our existing businesses have. So what that looks like is everything from a business needs assessment to on-the-ground kind of, you know, hello, how are you? And how can we help for our businesses? Additionally, a major gap that I've already seen kind of here in the first month is business resources. We are an interesting island here because all around us, there are gobs of business resources, training classes, grants, but they don't often touch Tacoma Park individually. So one of the first things I'm working on, and I have to say the rec department has been fantastic, is business training. So bringing in some of the resources that I know already exist, they're working in our neighboring communities, but they're just not touching us. For example, the Latino Economic Development Corporation. They've worked with us on housing, but never on business. And for us, it's a new thing. For them, it's a new thing. But we've, you know, they've been in this area for a decade at least. So starting March 28th, we'll have our first business training class at the rec center on New Hampshire Avenue. And it's going to be a very kind of straightforward, how to start a business in Maryland? How to get your business license? How to make sure, you know, all those things are clean? And how do you get moving forward? Part of that conversation is also how do you get your idea to a business strategy plan to kind of get started. So this is really business retention. Many people will start a business and not have a plan. They're building the plane while they're flying it. And we really want to kind of arrest some of that activity and get some business operation knowledge, just basic level, to our businesses. We have a follow-up class April 18th here in the Community Center Building. And I've also arranged for one-on-one office hours for business counseling and coaching. So we'll be getting that information. So, we'll be getting that information out, and that's really going to be something I'm focusing on on the year coming, getting that technical assistance and one-on-one coaching counseling for our businesses. Next is our workforce development partnerships. There are some interesting statistics in Tacoma Park. One is that we have a high unemployment rate. Now, that shocks everybody, mostly because the unemployment rate is not with the majority residents. The unemployment rate really lands squarely on our African-American and Hispanic and Latino populations, to the point of double-digit unemployment rates for our African-American population. Now, we're talking 30-plus percent of Tacoma Park residents are struggling with unemployment. Much like the business resources, Montgomery County is full of workforce development resources. There's just not a bridge, so I'm working on that bridge. And again, the rec department, these are my new best friends. My old best friends are at HCD. But my new best friends in the rec department have kind of jumped right in and said yes to any harebrained scheme. The one that's coming up first is, the one coming up first is March 7th, I'm making sure it's March in my brain, but it's all written down, I promise. March 7th, there is an open house for Thomas Edison High School. That is our technical high school that is extraordinary. So, met with the principal, saw they have a high-tech building, everything from architecture and CAD certification to healthcare fields. This is not kind of like my old-school workshop, you know, work woodshopping kind of, you know, high school. They really are extremely advanced, they have 1,000 spots, of which 800 are already filled. Tacoma residents need to be a part of that. So, we are arranging a bus trip to their open house on the 7th, it's from 5:00 to 8:00. Our rec folks will be picking up families at the New Hampshire Avenue site for the recreation center and here, and we'll be taking the families and the students over to see this open house and finally get connected in a way that is not just a flyer or kind of narrative newsletter, but really something that brings you and brings the resources in your face. These last four, in the interest of time, I have to say, are the big-ticket items. New Hampshire Avenue corridor, for me, is now where I live. So, I spent a couple hours out there today, and everything that I do is really preparing the businesses that are there, and the purple line businesses that are there and going to be immediately impacted, trying to get some ways to fortify the businesses there. There will be struggles, there will be challenges, but if we get out ahead of it, and, you know, now we have an extra hour, excuse me, an extra year for our implementation, but with that said, now is the time to kind of wrap our arms around the businesses that we know we want to be here. Again, the Tacoma Rec Center proposes something that is very exciting, because it'll be something under our control. Once we have our land swap settled, this is a build-out that is going to be about planning, about housing, about recreation, about economic development. There is so much opportunity there, and Tacoma Recreation Center is something that, you know, again, it's one of, it's one of the big-ticket items that I think is, it's really going to set an example of how we believe. And if we truly believe, like we say we do, in New Hampshire Avenue, that recreation center project is going to be the thing that proves it. The last two are really about relationships, making very good friends with the Washington Adventures Hospital. I've been doing some outreach, I even found some interesting connections with the Ronald McDonald House, and they're, you know, interested in the area, as well as, as you all know, schools, et cetera, housing, retail opportunities. And finally, Tacoma Junction. Currently, at this point, we know that it's, it's in, you know, the county review and proposal and comment stage, but for me, I'm really focusing on what that looks like when it gets here. So, who's there, how we actually take the businesses that exist right now, who are ready to expand, and put them into, you know, our shiny new place. So, I'll, with that, pass it to, oh, with that, I'll pass it to planning.
Sorry, just batting cleanup here, I wanted to call out a few things very quickly about planning. Planning really helps create and shape the framework of what's possible, and so it's how the work gets done. Obviously, you're very aware of the development review and land use issues and the infill and redevelopment, and again, they touch on all of these projects that are bubbling up, that we know are brewing at various different stages. And I wanted to mention specifically the pedestrian bike infrastructure and safety. That includes both our Safe Routes to School program, as well as, out of my shop, more efforts to make biking a reasonable, safe option that people can choose with pop-up bike lanes, testing some of the ideas we have of implementing the next stages out of the Montgomery County Master Bike Plan that was approved this last summer. And I won't belabor the other points, but we're looking, we're looking forward and excited about the possibilities for the teamwork here.
So, thanks, we did spend a little bit more time on HCD, because it's handling housing and economic development, which are top priorities for the council. One of the things that they didn't talk about was their staff capacity, which is very tight. I will say that having the decision made to hire an economic development manager in a month has already made remarkable connections, so we appreciate that.
But does that mean we're not tied with public works?
Absolutely, they are. Absolutely. So, we have our finance director, Susan Chung.
In finance, I want to say about our vendors.
SunTrust Bank. Last Friday, SunTrust Bank announced a merger with BBNT, and the new institution will be the sixth-largest bank in the United States. And I was confirmed by the relationship manager, nothing would be changed in short term, but the long-term effect is unknown. So, I'm hoping that the current favorable term with SunTrust will continue. We have the earnings credits and also the bank interest rate, which is higher than last few years. So, I want to see if we can continue with this favorable terms with them. In the area of sustainable investment and bank policy, we have contacted with the investment consultant, Michael Epper, to start with a small group meeting with the council members in the future, and we are very happy, yesterday, he actually attended the Nuclear Free Committee meeting yesterday, and explained about the socially responsible investments. We're looking forward to work with him, and hopefully, he will give us very good suggestions of what we need to invest in. In modified budget documents to earn the GFOA award, I submitted in August last year an application to GFOA for the Excellence in Budget Award, and as of today, I do not have the result, but I'm hopeful. So, we'll see to receive the review from the committee to see how we can improve our coming budget document. So, improvement is coming. And in the stormwater fee structure change, finance staff will be participating with the recommended stormwater fee calculation. Instead of using the current ERU rate, we're going to change to a new way of calculating the fee. Our annual stormwater fee file is usually sent to the Montgomery County, usually at the end of May, and we'll be sending it this year. Next year, hopefully, there will be some change in the calculation, it will be different. The largest challenge to finance in the past 12 months is actually have been the staff shortage. Finance staff, finance office has five full-time employee and one half-time employee. Since the departure of our part-time assistant in April of 2018, we were not able to hire a new or part-time employee until October. And in October, one of our full-time employee went on long-term leave, and then again, another employee went on long-term leave in February, and should be back at the end of March. So, technically, we are working on the basic support of four and a half staff. So, we're able to work through the period, because we have a group of very committed and very flexible staff, and I want to send my kudos to my accounting supervisor, as well as my part-time assistant. She's been very, very helpful to us. Thank you.
Our library director, Ellen?
Okay. Of course, the biggest project, biggest concern for us is moving ahead with the library renovation. Currently, library and city staff are reviewing new concept designs submitted by our architect, Greg Luke Meyer, in December. These are predicated on the construction of a new library building with basically the same footprint as in the earlier designs. This recommendation is based on a cost comparison done by Luke Meyer and AdTech engineers in October. The recent floodplain delineation study determined that the building floor elevation for the library has to be one foot higher than the floodplain elevation. Two approaches to correcting this problem emerged from the cost comparison. The first was demolishing the library and constructing a new one with the floor elevation matching, matching that of the rest of the community center building. Secondly, constructing a retaining wall along the length of the parking lot and lowering the parking lot to slope toward the new retaining wall. This would lower the grade at the library, community center, and hopefully, lower the floodplain level. The cost of the second option is roughly three times more costly than that of starting with a new building. That's 840,000 versus 280,000. So, the recommendation of the study is to demolish the current library and raise the floor level of a new library to that of the community center. The advantages to this approach would be having sufficient space for mechanical duct work, eliminating the present wood floor framing, which is a fire hazard, connecting the community center with the library, relocating the bathrooms where they are actually wanted, as opposed to trying to tie them into the existing plumbing, which is very old, of course, and raising the ceiling height. Greg Luke Meyer is scheduled to make a full presentation to the city council in March, including the new concept designs based on the construction of a new library building. So, that's the main thing. I won't, I won't address our considerable volume of programming and work with the schools, except to mention briefly that we do have a new immigrant family book club that is a joint, joint program of the Friends of the Library and the library staff and the ESL teacher at Piney Branch Elementary. We've already had two meetings of this group, and we're going to have a third in April.
Our human resources director?
Good evening. My name is Alexis Blackwell, I'm the Director of the Human Resources Department. We have five different initiatives that we'll be working on this year. The first one around training includes the racial equity. We're going to do an introduction and training for all of our staff. And then the second one is safety training and messaging. We're going to focus on finishing up the safety and health plan, and then train the supervisors and staff on incident reporting and workers' compensation. The next one is on performance. We're going to have a consultant review, our performance evaluation program, and we expect that to begin in early fiscal 2020. The next area is employee relations. We have AFSMI and Local 400 collective bargaining that's going to begin in November of 2019, November or December of calendar 2019, and it's full contract negotiations for both of the unions. Then the last area is health and wellness. We're going to do a big campaign using Real Appeal, which is a free program through United Healthcare, and it's a health and fitness and weight loss program. We had a meeting with our United Healthcare reps, and we were looking at a 10% increase in the cost of our premiums, because we are not doing the preventive work that we need to do. So, that's the implementation, the reason why we're going to be implementing this. And we pay about $2 million in medical insurance, so 10% is huge. Those are the big-ticket items for HR.
All right. Tony Duvall, I'm the police chief. It's an exciting time in the police department. In the last year or so, we've implemented several changes within the police department, and a lot of that was consistent with the city council resolution for what the expectations were for the police department. We've done a restructuring of the police department. This involved several promotions and a competitive promotional process that was conducted by the International Chiefs of Police. So, we put several people in place. We think we have a much more cohesive structure within the police department. We've also hired seven new police officers in the last year. Two are going to be graduating from police academy next month, and us five that just entered the police academy. We're very excited with some of the programs we've implemented, where we reestablished our Chiefs Advisory Board. We've done a lot of robust community outreach with our schools, we put them on a monthly basis. We've also implemented Coffee with a Cop, and several other programs that I think are really going to start to reinvigorate our community policing outreach. One of the steps to do that is a community policing officer. The council approved one additional officer for us, and I'm very pleased to say we're going to be filling that position. We're hoping that person can really be the coordinator for all of our community outreach programs. As briefly mentioned, the atrium construction, we're very pleased to see that we're going to get that area built out. We're kind of cramped in a small space within the police department, and that's really going to be a positive, especially for our dispatchers, who just have to sit in one place for a very long period of time, and it's going to be a nice new space for them. In the upcoming year, we're looking, like I said, we're looking forward to filling that community service officer. We're looking forward to continuing to expand our community outreach and connections, most importantly, I think, with our youth and our immigrant community. We're also looking at developing MOUs, most importantly, with the District of Columbia. Recent incidents have brought that to the forefront, and we think that it's very important that we have an MOU with them. And I think it's very important also, I'm looking forward to fostering education and continuing education for our staff. I think it's very important, the city pays for college and other classes, and I think that we really are going to try to push that for staff to professionalize the agency. I will be presenting the annual police report on March 6th, and I'll go into much more detail about last year. I will say that we're pleased to see a decrease in overall crime in the city of Tacoma Park, about a little bit over 6% last year. Since 2014, there's been over a 30% reduction in overall crime in the city of Tacoma Park. So, thank you.
All right. Director of Recreation.
Good evening. This is Greg Clark, Director of Recreation, and I am extremely excited about what we have planned initiatives for next fiscal year for recreation, with the first being the transition of the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center to the city of Tacoma Park from the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission. And with that, we are, we propose to expand our hours at the recreation center, and a reason for this is you come into this building any evening throughout the day, and it's a fight to get to a room. We are proud to say that, you know, we have our programs and services and things that we're offering are growing. So with that, we would like to expand the hours of the recreation center, so that we can have additional programs for seniors, as well as tots throughout the, throughout the day. We're proposing to open that from 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. The new- Um, the new, uh, hours are from ten AM to two PM, which right now we open at two. In addition to that, um, we have a exciting youth success, um, staff, person and program that we put in place, uh, Javonte McDonald. He's done a really, really good job, um, of reaching out to the community, um, working with the schools, working with neighborhoods, uh, taking out programs and services for ages thirteen to twenty-four out into the community. Um, and he's done such a, a great job that we are planning on expanding that um, and adding some, uh, exciting things for our young people, more developmental opportunities, um, some fun opportunities, uh, as well, um, for our residents. Um, one of the things that, uh, with our, all of our programs and things being full, um, we have an electronic registration system that we've had for some time now that it's about time that we, um, have some improvement to that as well. So, we're planning to, um, improve our, uh, patron experience with our, um, active net registration system. Um, and that actually includes two things. Um, one is to include, to, uh, actually improve the user, the end-user, uh, experience, um, so that they can have a more seamless process in registering and things of that nature. Um, in addition to that, uh, we're planning to expand our gender options, um, so that, uh, more residents can, uh, feel comfortable with, you know, identifying with, uh, more, uh, gender options, uh, in the system. Lastly, one of the last things that we have and, and, uh, Chief mentioned it and, uh, I think we have some of the best staff, um, in the area, uh, for, for recreation. And, um, every twelve or thirteen years, we have an opportunity to attend the National Recreation and Parks Association Conference, which is held, um, in Baltimore, Maryland. This coming year is actually, um, in September. So, one of the things that I'm proposing is that we get, um, our staff trained and developed um, so they can bring some new, exciting ideas back to our residents, um, and attend the conference in Baltimore.
And I think I'll, uh, turn over to our deputy city manager to talk a little bit about, uh, some of the things he's, um, got in mind and, and some of the racial equity areas of emphasis.
Needless to say, and, and, uh, I'll put Susie in the same category as me when I say this, uh, all of the opportunities, challenges that you've heard about from all of the department heads, uh, and, and staff so far um, are challenges and opportunities for Susie and I as well. Um, one of the things that I, uh, can speak to, uh, that hasn't been spoken to though, as, uh, the city manager, uh, mentioned, are, are racial equity efforts. Um, we, when we're talking in public meetings, often we're, uh, talking about councils, uh, efforts and, and that, uh, um, with, as they relate to racial equity. Um, we have a racial equity consideration statement, um, that council discusses as they make each of their decisions. Um, but we also wanted to make the point that we're being very deliberate internally about including racial equity considerations into staff discussions about budgets, uh, about services and programs. And everyone around this table, um, speaks the same language and understands the importance to the city, uh, importance to the staff, importance to, uh, the council, uh, about, uh, racial equity. Um, we continue to work with GARE and the National League of Cities Race and Equity Leadership, um, Division. Um, right now, we're actually working, uh, with, uh, the National League of Cities to develop a roadmap to help us pull together and better coordinate, uh, some of our efforts. Um, in fact, yesterday, I was the sole panelist on a webinar, uh, put on by, uh, the National League of Cities because they wanted to highlight some of the work that Tacoma Park was doing um, and, uh, have our kind of draft roadmap, uh, as a model to show what, uh, other, how other municipalities could use that tool. Um, we'll also be joining a regional cohort through COG, um, and that's sponsored by GARE. That will start in, uh, early fall of fiscal year twenty twenty. Um, one of the things we continue to do internally, um, and it is a challenge, is identifying sources of data and figuring out how we use that data to help, uh, inform decision-making. Uh, we just got the results, well, the draft results of, um, the community survey, the resident survey that recently went out and I think that'll be really useful, helpful information. Um, the report is, uh, gonna be, uh, the final report will be submitted later this month and the consultant from, uh, from, uh, National Research Center will be here on March sixth to present that information. Um, as you know, in addition to the, the, you know, written survey that went out, we also supplemented the, the survey with focus groups of immigrants from, um, African countries and, uh, Spanish speakers, um, which, uh, traditionally are underrepresented when surveys are conducted. Um, we have the preliminary findings of, of report from, uh, those focus groups and, and it's indeed very interesting information. We look forward to sharing that and, uh, look forward to using that information as we, um, make decisions moving forward. Um, and finally, um, we will continue to support and assist council as you all begin, um, the task of overhauling some of the major, uh, policies and procedures in the city to make sure that they are racially equitable and accessible to all. Um, those include, uh, policies related to traffic calming, um, sidewalk, uh, construction, um, treat the tree ordinance, uh, among other things.
Can I just take a few minutes to, um, talk about city elections? So, um, the next year, um, I'll be working with board elections very closely and plan for the twenty twenty election.
Assuming we reach an agreement with Montgomery County to share polling places, the board and I will be working on procedures for operating those polling places. Um, and also, I, I expect to be issuing an RFP or obtain quotes for scanners and e-poll books. Um, if by chance that doesn't work out, uh, we'll have to come up with another solution. And one option would be to have an election vote by mail. And the city of Rock, Rockville will be having its first vote by mail election in November of this year. So, we'll have a good model to work from if that becomes necessary.
And I'd like to, um, ask our city attorney, if you'd like to say a few words. We'll catch you off-guard here. Sorry.
Sure. Well, um, what, I mean, what I'm looking forward to doing this year is, you know, helping everybody, you know, achieve their objectives within their departments and stay out of trouble.
That's, that's wonderful. Um, I just want to turn this over to the council but I, I do wanna thank, um, thank everyone for, uh, the hard work that they give, the professionalism that they bring to the job and it's, and it's also fun to work with these folks. So.
Great. Well, thank you, everyone, for that update. I will turn it over to my colleagues in a moment but I first would ask, um, since we don't have that much time tonight, I would love if people went around the room and just very quickly named one or two challenges you see in the work you're doing. You're all very good about naming things you were excited about but I think it's also really important for us as a council, um, to know, what do you see as some of the challenges, um, to doing the work so that as we do consider the priorities and the upcoming budget, we have that in mind as well? So, I don't know if we wanna go in reverse order, um, but just really quick, whatever, yeah.
Yeah, sure. But the one thing that comes to mind is staffing for, for my department. We will be, um, we're now advertising for the third person in, in my office and that's a three-quarter time position and I'm hoping that'll make a big difference and we'll see. But staffing is a challenge.
Why don't we just go around this? Go ahead.
Um, I would, the number one thing I would say is space, um, for some of the programs and things that we wanna have. Um, and the second thing I would think is, is staffing as well with, with just the amount of time, um, that staff spend on things.
Probably a consistent theme but for us, it's just, uh, diversity within the workforce, finding quality, uh, people that wanna be law enforcement officers that, uh, so we can have, uh, a police department that's reflective of the community we serve.
We need women.
We do. I was just gonna say that. Of the, of the seven that we hired, all seven were male. Uh, we do have some diversity within that, that seven but, but we're looking at some progressive ways that we can try and get some more females on the police department.
I think our biggest, uh, challenge would be dealing with some of the unexpected issues that occur. Um, just the nature of human resources. There are issues that arise and it'll take a week to, to deal with it, so it kinda pushes things back.
The library's biggest challenge is really stemmed from the age of the building, which is over sixty years old. Um, we don't have, we have failing systems, old systems. We don't have a young adult books, we don't have a young adult reading space. Um, our, our young adult books are now shelved on, um, what were formerly reference shelves. Um, we just don't have enough space for the books and there's overflow of books that are sort of back in a storeroom. Um, so, space is a huge constraint. To an extent, staffing too, um, in that we have one full-time and one part-time children's library and they're doing a tremendous amount of.
I would say of the staffing in the library, um, one of the concerns that, um, Alan sometimes mentions is it, is that we have a half-time librarian and that, that person's only, the only younger person of all of the staff. We would love to see that be more of a full-time position because of the wonderful service and, um, and the number of younger people that kind of relate to her. Um, she's limited in her time to share that.
I'd like to add very quickly, in terms of space, virtually all our programs are held in the, in the library's children's room and we move furniture around for all these programs. Sometimes that happens as often as three times a day and then move them back for the kids and families that come in. Uh, space limitations are not a.
Um, for finance department, I think I just mentioned that, um, staffing is our, uh, biggest challenge right now. I'm not asking for extra staff. I just want my staff to come back. And also, um, maybe, you know, uh, some areas I'd like to improve is, um, in project-wise, um, uh, we are working with, um, IT department to, to, um, finish up with our credit card program. Um, we've been having a lot of issue with this, uh, company that, uh, trying to introduce this new software so we can integrate the software with our current data system. And for some reason, the software is not working well. We've been testing for so many months and still not working. So, I, I'm very grateful for one of the staff that are from, uh, IT department. They have been helping me. He's like an ex, extra staff, to finance department in this particular project. So, thank you so much.
Um, one of the major challenges I see is around, um, our business retention, the technical assistance and the professional assistance that they will need. Once you start digging into the business community, you start to find out who has tax issues, who doesn't have their, um, system outside of an Excel spreadsheet. You start to really see gaping holes. So, the biggest challenge honestly is going to be the triage and the cost of that business triage. Um, so, again, starting with the needs assessment to figure out where it is will give us a better idea of that number. And we have a general business outreach and retention number in the budget but, um, I'm pretty sure that we're gonna go through that fast. Um, and lastly is just staffing because currently there's me against the world. And I am, uh, actually going to, um, we have a full-time, um, intern in the budget. So, starting there.
This is something we're proposing.
Yes, we have, yes, proposed in the budget, a full-time intern, um, to support the work that we'll be doing. So, those are the challenges.
Okay, great. Um, so I really think that's a great question. Um, and I'm glad that Susie brought up the staff capacity. We made it a point, um, to include that, um, and this kind of represents where we are right now. We have a very aggressive approach in all three areas. Um, and we have an incredibly dedicated staff of people working within HCD that have very, very specific expertise that will help us propel this forward. Um, so, I, so ditto, ditto, right, Susan? Ditto. Um, the, the other piece, I guess, from, um, what I've been able to see in my limited time here, uh, so it's a challenge and an opportunity, uh, but it's being responsive to new communities that are coming into our office, uh, around language. Uh, what I'm seeing is that as we increase our presence in the community, people are beginning to trust us with very important issues in their lives, um, that are mostly housing-related and kind of the ancillary issues. Um, and so, we need to look, uh, at our department and see where the language capacity will come from so that we can be responsive as well as, um, address the needs without it being too awkward. Um, and then the last is space, space, space. Um, and what we're finding is that as we have more, um, deeper and more critical conversations with people and it's probably more in my shop than it is in, with Samira and Roz, people are talking about their homes, their lives, their children. We need spaces where things cannot be overheard, um, where they feel comfortable kind of letting it all go and speaking to us freely so that we can give them the information that they need to take the next step. So, those would be the three things, language access, space and, um, staff capacity.
I'd like to touch on something that, um, I think is not specific to planning but planning's had a lot of involvement in it in the last year and that is public engagement. Not just the mechanism of do we have a software program for it, though that's important, but also the, the inclusiveness that we hear a lot from a small group of people in the town. We do, they're, we all know, they're large communities. We hear very little from. And there are challenges in how to reach out. There are challenges in which is, which are the right ways that, you know, online surveys may not be suitable, you know, all kinds of those things. And I think it's very specific to my work but I know that, that all our departments bump up against that.
IT department is, uh, pretty much like others have mentioned, staffing. Uh, it is a small shop, uh, but what we see as a challenge is that we need to get systems, uh, stable and efficient and effective for the city to operate. And once we get past that, the, the efficiencies that we gain from that will allow us to move into other aspects of, you know, technology. So, we are seeing improvements there but as we make more of these changes, which take, take a lot of time, we will, uh, we will be able to address and get more efficiencies across the entire city. And that's exciting but it's just a long process. So, but we will get there.
I am seeing a new enthusiasm and, um, call for Tacoma Park to work on a problem that we don't necessarily have the capacity or the capability to control. Um, for example, people want us to have a plan for one hundred percent greenhouse gas emission reductions but some of that, we are preempted by the state and/or federal laws. We can't provide one hundred percent clean energy for everyone in the city because state law doesn't allow for that. So, I think one of the big challenges in sustainability is meeting expectations with a problem that is larger than life, um, and finding ways that we can localize action in a meaningful and impactful way within the constraints of a small city's budget and capacity to do so.
Not to repeat but staffing, staffing, staffing. But for, my department is kind of a different, uh, slightly different hue. Uh, we have a lot of, uh, one-person professional staff. So, for, on the professional layer, we're one layer deep. You have one city engineer. You have one arborist. Um, and so, the requirements, uh, on a day-to-day basis far exceed their ability to be as responsive, as complete, as thorough as they might like to. Uh, because, uh, if, if they're on the phone, the next three calls go to voicemail. Yeah. So, um, that's always a problem. In concert with that, we have, um, a extremely thin, razor-thin administrative support. So, in addition, I have to ask these professional staff to do their own administrative functionality. So, it consumes more and more of their time. Um, and then on the field side, we have great field employees. I, you know, our sanitation workers, our right-of-way workers. People are enthusiastic to be here. I get compliments all the time about their energy, their personability, their, you know, seem to like what they do. Um, so, that is an ongoing effort to try to make sure staff are trained, that they understand what the expectations are, that we have a high level of, um, expectation for community service and how to keep people motivated. and how to keep people motivated and interested, given the financial realities of limited capacity to increase people's salaries. But just to, you know, bring new skills, bring expectations, and try to help keep people as enthusiastic employees to meet the expectations of the community.
Sure. I think the biggest challenge I see coming down the pike is going to be revising the tree ordinance, striking the right balance between safety, preserving old trees, planting new trees, people's property rights, and the financial burden it has on residents. And coming up with a permanent process that is thorough, quick, and fair. And I think that's probably gonna be one of the council's challenges as well. Sure. I don't have anything new to say, but I think it's funny that Darryl was talking about professional staff because she's one of the, everyone around this table wears so many hats. I mean, Darryl's Public Works Director, Operations Manager, Intergovernmental Relations Coordinator. Susan is a budget specialist, a finance director, an accountant. Greg's the Recreation Director, Program Manager, et cetera. So I think that just hits home the point that staffing is an issue for sure. And then also something that Roz said, we have, we have a very engaged base of residents. And oftentimes, we are, but oftentimes, we are hearing from the same ones. And I would, I think a challenge for us will be to figure out ways to engage people in the community who traditionally haven't been engaging with the government.
And I'd like to conclude by just saying that I know that if we had more staff, more space, more resources, people would be blown away with the services that they would receive. But we also have to balance it with the affordability of the taxpayer. And so my wonderful role during the preparation of the budget process is to say no, which is really unfortunate. Because I also know that with another staff person for grace, the work that is being done and really appreciated by tenants would just be taken to another level. By police would be taken to another level. You know, by Ellen, by Darryl, whomever, people would be very happy to get those services. It's, it's just that it has to be paid for. And we recognize that we're a small city. You know, Chuck Bean from COG last week said we hit high above our weight level. And it's true. But it also is a tough job.
Any other, any questions from the council?
I just wanna say a big thank you. This has been amazing to hear from everybody. And I know I don't wanna add to your work as we're talking about staffing, but the more that we can do this, I think, I mean, this is really awesome to hear from everybody and get this level of detail. And I found the opportunity to discuss challenges as well to just be really, really useful. So I have a few, like, in-the-weeds questions I'll follow up with people individually on. But thank you so much.
I agree with Casey and appreciation for this meeting. I think it's been real helpful to me in just understanding where we are. And it's like, you know it in an ongoing basis. But to sit down at a one point in time and just review everything like this is really helpful. And, you know, I've been here for a while. Everybody likes to mention that, so I mention it too. But to reflect back on where the city was, you know, 10 years ago and where we are now. See, I cut some, shaved some years off of that. You know, the place has really grown and it all is in the management. Really excited just to hear what you all have planned, to hear what you see the challenges are, and think about where we're gonna be a year from now. Look forward to doing this on an ongoing basis.
Ditto.
Again, I truly appreciate staff, your responsiveness is just, I could not put into words. I actually had someone who is not a constituent actually comment on the fact that he wished that he was across the border in Tacoma Park because the level of responsiveness that the people who live just across the street get from city management is just leaps and bounds beyond what they receive from the county. So that's, you know, to, that speaks so highly to the level of work and effort that you all put in every day. And I know we're always asking for stuff as council members. But definitely wanna hear from you all. Like, I could, I'm new to the game, still a little wet behind the gears. But I consider myself to be a partner. So if there are things that we, or me, I don't wanna speak for everyone, but if there are things. If there are things that we can do in our position as council members, please let us know. I mean, that's something that I am desperately trying to figure out. You know, it's a game of double dutch, when to jump in, when to jump out. And trying to figure out, when can we, you know, really push certain matters at the county level or at the state level? Or even try to just nudge someone where just me sending the email might get people to respond a little quicker. Please just let us know. Because I do believe that we're all working on the same team. We're all working together. And I know resources are limited. And so whatever we can do to try to assist that, I definitely wanna, wanna be a resource.
Were you suggesting maybe we should talk about annexation? Get the people to. Just saying.